...Andy Lee, thanks. Would you like to please stand?
Thank you for joining me, my heart is with you. I hope grace and health, Father, we come to you with a very humble heart. The question is, we know you are the Lord and Savior of all. And, Lord, we ask to your guidance on each and every one present here. Not only do we ask for that guidance for each one individually, but we especially ask that you watch over the mayor and councilman if they critique or disagree. Lord, we are so blessed to have this time of the season to honor your son, Jesus Christ, who came for a business of our praise. Lord, we thank you so much that you attend and take prayers. Lord bless this, Christ amen in praise. Amen.
We have an established quorum, Councilman Marones, Councilman Yenfield, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Rodriguez. May everybody have the sacrifice of the election, so Texas can vote.
......................................................................................................
At this time, I'd like to entertain any citizen comments.
Yes, may I ask?
Miss Castillo?
Thank you. I'm supposed to be over the microphone, right?
My microphone, you know it.
I wanted to make this thing work last night, but it didn't work. So, anyway, thank you so much. My name is Sherry Hopkins-Gustavo. I reside in 10205 Briar in Florisville, and I am a citizen of Florisville. Council members, mayor, and all present, thank you for allowing me to come before you. I want you to know that I have these remarks because as I talk to folks, there is so much confusion regarding item 1B, which is to appoint or elect, or whether have an election. So, the objective of my citizen's comment is twofold: to ask Mr. Hug, Chris, to bring clarification to the agenda item 1B at the time presented for discussion regarding the timeline of vacancies beyond the city charter 3, Charter 3.06, and secondly, to explain the state election code in reference to section 201.002 regarding the council that has been made it as a body authorized to make an appointment or order a special election to fill the vacancy. And furthermore, to explain section 201.023 regarding the vacancy from referencing the eight-day rule. More specifically, we would like, I would like clarification for everyone regarding the date this particular day was appointed by the council and the full month ending date. The official date of Mr. Miller's vacancy, the date it was issued by the council, or the day he tendered resignation, including the eight-day rule. Regarding the, also regarding the date since vacancy for the special election, and the charter makes reference to its end date, wait till. My major concern is, why the council has no choice in the matter other than to have a special election? Why were they led down this road on $80,000 to $15,000 expense to elect an official to serve these months? Now, does that make sense? Expends regarding ballot, software, workers, attorney, and supplies? When if this had been clarified early enough before the due date, we would, I'm sure that we would have done it differently. The charter states that the special election should be held in accordance with the state law for the purpose of electing the successor. Chapter 201 of Election Code states that when a public official resigns, it must be, in writing, and that was done, delivered to the appropriate authority for acting on the resignation, that's, and I'm not sure who that is, the city manager, the mayor, or the city secretary. This today, the city secretary does not yet receive an official letter. It might have a copy, but it wasn't an official letter. And the other thing that has already been done is the acceptance of his familiar resignation on December the 12th, 2013, which was last Thursday. Also, the state election code 201.03 further states that a vacancy occurs on the date that the resignation is accepted by the appropriate authority. On are the eight days after the date of it received by the authority, whichever is earlier. So, see why all of, there's so much confusion regarding the dates and whether we've already not been advised regarding the appointment, which we were always, probably the 10 number legal, uh, to advise us, but that was not done. Or it was done, but we were too late. So, that's why I'm asking Mr. Hug to please further clarify all this information.
I'll do my part.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens coming? Mr. Robles?
I didn't wait last week. I want to...
Yeah? Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. It's not that pity and jealousy get in into this. Justice going on. Everybody's got their pain, jealousy, and pity, and this stuff like that. If people know so much about what's going on, share the information, don't be selfish. Share it. But, you know, all this is, to me, is just pity and jealousy. That's all it is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Morrison. I, uh, I live in 101 Mike County in the state of Florisville. I actually submitted my, um, request to all to be considered for the governorship for our city council. I am currently the health inspector for the county Wilson, and I live in Fort Bel Air, and my case goes for here. I'm new to the area, but I definitely think it's considered, even in the event that my county, the Mike County, Mike County, I was moved to that as long, and someone had written that, so.
Is there any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Julian Yuha, and I am a temporary resident of Florisville now. Um, something that Sherry said concerns me a little bit, and I just need to make a comment. There is never too much money spent to have the people have a voice, to have an election and have the people decide who should be on city councils. I, I don't even understand the correlation between the money spent and having them have a voice. You are here to represent all of us and to do it in a fair and honest way. I believe what's happening is a lot of people are feeling what's going on is not being fair and honest. So, I encourage you, whatever is legally done, to please do it in the best interest of the city of Florisville, and not in your own personal best interest, or in the best interest of your friends or relatives. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, we're getting on to item 1B, business. City council may consider, discuss, or take action regarding the second reading of ordinance 2013-0011 in reference to the speed studies completed and speed limit changes warranted from those studies in the city limits of the city of Florisville. Mr. Baker, did you want to say anything on that?
Uh, no, maybe, yeah, second reading. I don't know if it's before, because you can post that production in speed line. It actually also is covered in our leak in our local paper as well.
So then, on that, I'm ready to begin. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
We approve the second reading of the ordinance 2013, and we're going to reference to the speed studies completed and speed limit changes warranted from those studies in the city limits of the city of Florisville.
Do you have a motion? May I get a second? Do you have a motion? By Councilman Guerrero, cited by Councilman Rodriguez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And on that, for some of you that might not be aware, that the speed limits is being changed from a void to that light on Walmart, I think it was 70, I believe, and it's going to change to 55, the 70s being pushed back to the light on the other side. So, it's going to take a little, give us used to it for those who like to go 70s. Now, we move to item 1B. The city council may consider, discuss, or take action regarding board appointment for the FEDC board of directors. Mr. Baker, if you want to talk on that?
Andy's gonna speak.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. Mr. Baker, your name is Mike. I reside at 607 Altria in Florisville, been resigned for a residency for 27 plus years now. I'm also fresh in a Florisville, United Development Forum. What we're needing to do tonight is a standard, uh, replacement appointment for FEDC. We are on a two-year rotating term. We have seven members, so three rotate off one year, and the next year, four, after four members the following year. So, what we're needing to do tonight is we have the three-year term, excuse me, the one-year term coming up from when we originally were appointed, and also we have a couple of resignations that we need to fill positions for one-year terms. Our recommendation is that we, uh, for the two-year term coming up, that you reappoint Jason Tally, Ray Lambert, and a third individual that's still in my career, positions who resigned for family medical reasons, is David Johns. So, for the two years, our recommendation, again, Jason Tally, Ray Lambert, and David Johns. For the one-year term, we'd like you to consider reappointing Graham Ramirez, who resigned last year to become head of director, and for him to continue on with his one-year remaining term. So, the recommendation is for Graham for a one-year term, excuse me. Then we have a vacancy, David Droger, who recently resigned, caught family medical issues, and also for a job. And we have two individuals we'd like to be considered our candidates. We have Roland Castro, I have words to him that gets appointed at the council commission and request he would accept that position. Another individual that's made a statement that he would like to be considered, uh, I have not spoken to him personally, and others remember the committee did, but he did not submit his application, and that one is Chris Pott. So, Chris Pott. Uh, Roland has previously served on FEDC, first few times visiting, a longtime resident, I think maybe a lifetime resident, except for a period lived in San Antonio. Chris Pott's dad is Ed's and Linda's top, that's his mother, they are owners of Easy Stock, longtime visiting people here in town, so that would be a position for one of those two. So, either Roland Castro or Chris Pott.
And I think we also had an application here for a friend who's, I listen to, and he would want to also be considered.
Andy, uh, all these two-year terms there, they're up?
Also, two-year terms, that's up. Last year, when we basically, we have new, an entire new committee appointed to FEDC, so we basically group draw at that time. So, we had some draw for a two-year term, and some drew for a one-year term. The one-year term of Jason Tally, Ray Lambert, and my career are up. My career did not wish to be considered, and I actually submitted a resignation, and we have to consider appointing that one to David Johns.
Now, all three of these are, are up, on the two-year terms and two or one-year terms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And such a position for Mr. Droger, or...
For Mr. Droger, the decision, we're looking at Roland Castro, Chris Pott, or I understand President Dog.
But that needs to still be considered a one-year term?
We're needing all fill out for a one-year term.
Okay, so it's a total of three, six, or five?
Well, we're actually leaving five positions to fill. Three two-year terms, and two one-year terms.
Okay.
Apologies for the confusion.
Mr. Council, at this time, I'd like to ask you all, if you feel what's going on there, other than the ones that have been...
Well, sure, you guys, have any of these who have asked me where they want to, you know, serve that, so you just, uh, a two-year rather than a one-year, or, or that they're set with their one-year or two-year?
Well, Jason and Ray were two, their terms come up for the one-year. So, they would, in a rotation, they would go back to the two-year term. Like, I would come off, my term would be up next to it. So, those positions that they are, they're coming off of one-year terms drawn by the straw, so they would be up to be for two years. I guess you can mix and match them any way you want, but those are just, they came off of one-year terms, so they're on, will go back to two. David Johns submitted his application and all like that, so we, we just recommended him for the two-year term. And then we have Graham, he returned the two-year term, he resigned, so we'd like him to continue his one-year remaining term. I just thought that was kind of sense. But that's the reason I did. And then we have David Droger, he was on the two-year term, his position, he resigned, so he had one year to go on it, so we need someone to fill the one-year position.
Okay.
So, that's the reason, so that's where we had Roland, Chris, or Fred.
And, okay, then, I'd like to make the motion to approve. Jason Tally has a two-year term, Ray Lambert has a two-year term, Mr. Chris Pipes has a two-year term, and as a one-year term, uh, Graham Ramirez and David Johns.
I think we should exclude Mr. Pipes for the bid in connection with this.
You, you just asked the, the council if we had any other suggestions?
My guess, I'm aware of Mike.
But has he? He did not, we, he did not commit an application. The other board member were going to contact him and ask him to submit an application, just, and he did not. The only one, contacted Roland Castro, and again, David Droger did recently resign, and Roland, we did not get a chance to talk to him to submit an application, but he had done it before. So, application we have would be David Johns, and Roland hasn't submitted one, but he said he would, and then President Dog said to submit an application, but he did not pick any of that forward.
Being the president of FEDC, do you suggest that, that it be, uh, tabled, or do you suggest that we just fill with the ones that, that are listed here? Because we've, the reason I'm considering Mr. Pipes is because he's, he's a, you know, you all included him in the, in, in the, in the mix here.
Right. Again, I'm a correct, you, a two-year term, we're recommending, yeah.
Hold on, let's finish the motion. We're going to a discussion here. Just a second, do I have a second on that motion? Wait a second, do we have another motion?
And I can motion appoint for a two-year term, Jason Tally, Ray Lambert, David Johns, and for a one-year term, Graham Ramirez and Roland Castro.
Do I have a second? Do you have a motion by Councilman Yenfield?
Before you, you make a vote, and then may I have a comment, please? My understanding of what you're saying is that you advertise this, you let the people know that you have vacancy, or you are going to have vacancies? I have seen nothing. I have an application, that's an outstanding application of the city on that particular committee, and that's the only reason my application is there. But it seems to me that if you're going to fill and, and you've promised this, you know, you as, as a council before, this kind of a committee or board, which to me is very important, I think we need to, uh, advertise, let them know, there's plenty of people here that are interested and qualified to do the job. And so, I, I really think it's such a way this is being done. And I just happened to, to have an application, a standing application of the city, but I had no idea until I read the, the agenda this, tonight. So, I, I am concerned that we haven't lived up to what you, the council, have said before, and that is, that we'll advertise, be transparent, and we'll build a, build a position for the city. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Can I get a vote now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, boys. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to item 1C. The city council may consider, discuss, or take action regarding variance for road spits.
Here's a handout, to make it easier to follow. Uh, my name is Tommy Baker. I'm the, uh, the executive director for the Florisville Economic Development Corporation. I reside at, uh, 386 Paloma, number 118, apartment 118, here in Florisville. And, uh, I started this by asking, uh, the question, why, why are we here for, asking for a variance? And, um, the first point is that there's an interlocal agreement between the city, the county, and the FEDC in regards to roads in, um, Rochelle Grande Industrial Park on, on FM 537. And that interlocal agreement states that the FEDC will construct roads at higher cost and expense, and that all roadways will, um, be governed by city plans and specifications. Now, while, while that's not, uh, clear in everyone's mind, because, um, because the property is not in the city limits, and it's not in the city's ETJ, um, what the FEDC has decided to do is, um, is go with the city's higher standards for road construction. Um, there's, the city has higher standards than the county, and so, in good faith, we're trying to, to please a number of entities, and, um, and the way we feel to go about that is to choose the higher standard for road construction. Our engineers have estimated, uh, the cost to pave the road, roads, and there's a, a main road that runs down the backbone of the park, and then, um, there's Cardinal, which is a, a street that runs east and west, so that there basically is a, is a cross, uh, road system in the park. And, uh, our estimates from the engineer are between $800,000 and $1 million for, to pave the road. That includes 10 inches of base and, uh, 2 inches of asphalt and, and concrete intersections because, um, the 18-wheelers out there will, will tear up the asphalt if we don't, if we don't put a good base in those intersections. Now, in addition to that, we have to meet a standard to, um, construct retention ponds, uh, and there are three of those that are required on the property, and those are, any road specimens are anywhere from $700,000 to $850,000. So, these cost factors alone are a extremely, um, tenuous financial, uh, situation with FEDC. We, we are going to have to borrow money to, uh, do this paving project, and, uh, we'll probably do the retention ponds, um, later after the roads in, um, just so we can build up some, some money to do a retention ponds. Now, to me, to be standards, um, there's a requirement for curbing all streets. Our engineer estimated that it would cost the FEDC between, uh, $300,000 and $400,000 in addition to, to all those other costs if we, uh, curb the streets in the park. So, we're here tonight to ask that the city council grant a variance, that we do not have to curb the streets, uh, but pave them and put in the retention ponds, um, and, and that's going to, to run a million and a half to a million, $800,000. And, and basically, um, the short and long of it is that the park is 95% sold out, so, um, this is, um, this is money that, um, we generate, but not from, uh, sales in that park. We have, we have 15 acres left in the park, uh, which, uh, when we sell those, won't even put a dent in a million five to a million seven in indebtedness, but we'll, uh, we'll go out for long-term, and we can eat this elephant one year at a time. So, that's, that's the FEDC's request. If you all would grant a variance, we would certainly appreciate your assistance in helping us out.
Mr. Baker, is there a timeline that you're willing to accomplish this, like?
I'm sorry?
Is there a timeline, a timeframe?
Uh, right now, um, by the, probably by the end of January, um, um, bids specs should be finished and go out for bid. Um, the project is unscheduled to start the, the, the month of March and be finished by, um, August, the, so the end of summer. And, um, then that's for, you know, for the road paving. I believe most of these companies are waiting to work with you, right? Yes, yes. What was promised, what is done, so that they are waiting to work with you. Um, we, you know, part of, of, um, the engineering plan are to take the current insurance and the excess from each property and, um, and bring those up to standards with, with culverts and, and base and the, um, entry ways for ingress and egress out of each person's property, and, uh, and, and that's, you know, standards that are there now.
Mr. Baker, I know that you've been working diligently in that area, and, you know, you're kind of fell into a lot of the financial issues that have come about on, in that property itself. Um, but I think that if, um, if we lower the city's standards for ourselves, that's just precedent for everyone else, that they want the same, want to be met with the same standards. So, um, my, my take is that, you know, probably the variance wouldn't be the best idea, uh, to, to give to FEDC. Uh, just like we've, we've told before, you know, and like we've talked about it before, you know, how, how can you expect everyone else to be in compliance if we're not in compliance?
You know, I've been, I understand what you're coming, I, I appreciate that. But here, but the difference here between what you're talking about and this request and others you're going to say, this is not in the city limits, it's not even in the city's ETJ. This property is extended far out, and so... This property is extended far out, and so you wouldn't even have a request for anything out there. The only reason this comes into play this time specifically is only because of interlocal agreements. The interlocal agreement doesn't, it doesn't even specify, we have to maintain the tolls, but it's not clear in that position. So, we did want to make sure that you understand, and the request is we don't put curbing in there in an area that is strictly under county jurisdiction, but it's only because of interlocal agreements. Again, it's not in city limits, and it's not in the city's ETJ.
And I completely understand, you know, it's, I think it's a very difficult decision, and, you know, but, you know, we can't. I mean, it still talks to the city, and if the city doesn't comply with its own rules, I mean...
You could also be jeopardized enough being able to pave yourself. You could push it above where we don't have, can't acquire it from.
Is it not true that if the city owns that property, then we have to maintain your roads?
Pardon?
If we own that, does that mean that the city will then have to maintain your roads?
We can't even provide, the city cannot maintain that, I'm sorry. It's not in the city limits.
That's what councilman O'Leary said, that the city owns it, so...
The city, from what we understand, that it's not in the city's limits, and not in the city's ETJ, y'all cannot legally go out there and maintain your roads.
Yeah, and what that is, is none of the street maintenance tax funds or anything could be used for it. The FEBC could pay city crews to go out there to maintain the roads, but the county can only maintain them under county standards. They can't maintain them at city standards. Okay, we have this issue with another development that was coming in a couple of months ago. And so, if the FEBC is willing to work with the agreement, and I'm not sure in the contract if it has a road maintenance agreement for future, if the FEBC is working with the city to pay for that, but that would be the way that the city would be able to maintain those roads.
You put your opinion in what your request is?
Well, from a legal perspective, it's, first off, it's not variance because it's not in the ETJ or in the city. This would be a written amendment to a contract, and so the city and county and the FEBC would all have this on hold. As far as the actual agreement to let that be waived, I don't think there's going to be more opinion on that, that's all, a decision totally conscious.
Being that it's written on the agenda as a variance, it should have come back as in such of a manner to where it is.
I think it changes so it's not...
You actually said exemption, not variance.
Yeah. It's an exemption of curbing requirements is mandated, and then it got the contractual amendment.
If I order it up more, then we promise those people out there to have the road paved and all that, so they can go on through it, or not, making that road, whatever we have to do.
I think the grants are very important. How long, what's the longest one that's been out there, the longest ten?
That happened prior to beginning of, for the last year, my understanding that land
were given to FNW, and when the land was given to FNW, they landlocked them, but that happened in 2009. There is some contracts out there that were signed and executed. Word said on those purchase contracts, we were supposed to provide paved roads between 50 to 90, but we were way past that. And at this point, we had them holding off, telling them we're working as fast as we can to try to do this. They have not, if they extend the progress out there, they've held the peace.
What's your opinion, Mr. Baker?
On this project in particular, I have met with Mr. Baker and Amy DeJakes on several different occasions in reference to this street. They meet an engineer, the engineer is actually our engineer, they meet our city engineer. So, our city engineer designed this street. So, he's been moving our courses required. It has gone back and forth about maintenance, this is a building on the road. I anticipate, you can imagine, that it's going to be a project drive, maybe because there's going to be heavy truck traffic on this road, and so we have to be able to establish a road that's going to hold up some time. It's going to be maintenance, it's going to be a nightmare, but I am strongly recommending that we do not maintain this street. I have expressed that more than I can. There are buildings on the road that's going to cost a million dollars, we don't have the million dollars we're using in our road. But I would say, because it is not in our real station, it is not going to be a city street, it's a project drive, that without the curves, there should not be a problem. But you can imagine that these trucks are going to be going in and out, trying to, they're going to beam up those curves. So, I would say, the engineer, which is our engineer, said that he has no problem. He had designed this, and actually has broken out the numbers and run for some chooses that we had at your last meeting, was to make the roads at last meeting, it was earlier this month, correct?
Right.
Where you get a preliminary demonstration of what the cost will be in reference to do that. This road is going to be so heavily impacted, then different portions, they're going to use concrete to be able to take care of the road and the heaviness and the weight that's going to happen. So, a road without curves should not be a problem. Again, I cannot emphasize enough, it's not in the city's limits, it's not in the city's ETJ. We could annex all day long and not lose this property.
I think you made a strong point to say that, you know, being that there are a bunch of 18-wheelers that are in that area, that, you know, I can...
It is not, I was...
And it actually would, you know...
It would be a majority, it would be a majority of the traffic there would be 18-wheelers. Am I correct? They may have a few vehicle traffic that may be for staff, but the lion's share, probably over 90% of the traffic coming out is going to be truck traffic, which is why it's going to cost a million dollars to do a very short distance, and even to address the fact that it's compacted. We've met with counties themselves, and they understand that I have no money to pay them, I'm not going to give any taxes off of this. And so, we need to be able to have, to establish this road, so that we can hit this project, but curves should not hold it up, and then we use that money for the other thing in reference to flooding. So, my opinion would be, I would not have any problems, because it is not going to be my city street, it is not going to be in the ETJ and/or the city limits. And it's built by, designed by our engineer, which has to be a warranty of at least a year.
What is the, what is going to be the depth in those intersections of the concrete?
Question again?
The depth, what is the thickness of the concrete of the intersections? Because there's so many intersections in that two, or what?
There's one intersection, that's the intersection of Rosso Grande and Park, and the specific on that, I don't know if I could quote you a specific...
There is four sections of concrete at that intersection. That's on top of a 10-inch base, and the rest of the road, on top of the 10-inch base, will have two inches of asphalt.
And the progress that it already has, based on it, is it worth 22 inches and 14 inches? Is it 23 to 26 inches over? Fire makers could have, but we don't know the, we've done some geotasking, we don't know the specific integrity of that. So, to make sure, trying to do it absolutely correct, minimize people's problems, we're going to go with it. That is going to be purpose.
So, you all have just to be...
When I hear that phrase, we're just going to do it on top of it. Leave it there and use that as additional support.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the FEBC's request for exemption for curbing requirements as mandated under section C.1 of the interlocal agreement, and due by Wilson County, the City of Florisville, and the FEBC on May 4, 2009.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a second? Can I have a motion by Councilman Manieto, second by Councilman O'Leary, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please. Okay, now we're going to go on to item one D. The City Council may consider, discuss, and take action regarding the appointment of vacant council place number one, or call of a special election for council place number one. As per section 3.06 vacancies of the Florisville City Charter.
Can everybody hear me? I'm over here, running a fever and everything, so I don't want to get around the podium where other people might be. What we're looking at here, and Mrs. Castillo gave a great outline to start with, to address some of the questions that are out there that the council has had, that the public has had. First, Councilman O'Leary was appointed December 13th of 2012, and so what happened last week, so keeping that date in mind, what happened last week was the acceptance of Councilman Miller's resignation by the council. Legally, what we're running into is resignation and vacancy are two completely separate legal terms and activities. So, Councilman Miller submitted his resignation with the date of November 25th on there, and turned it in on November 25th, or emailed him on November 25th, and so that would start the clock on there for the eight days from turning in. It's not accepted as an official resignation until it's received and acted upon by the governing body. Easier way to explain that is, if he had submitted his resignation, said he wasn't resigning until the end of the year, December 31st, 2013, the date for the elections would still be December 8th, 2013, the eight days after, regardless of what date it said, whether it's accepted, anything else. So, the purposes of triggering an election, that's the date on there. So, since it's set at December 3rd of 2013, and Councilman O'Leary was appointed December 13th of 2012, that's within the 12 months. So, there's really no option, other than at this point, call a special election. Because under the terms of the charter, it reads here, "In case of vacancy, it has been filled by the City Council within 12 months prior to the subsequent vacancy." So, the prior one being filled December 13th, and this one occurring, under the Elections Code, the vacancy of December 3rd, that's the option to date. Now, resignation is effective December 12th, when it was actually acted upon by the City Council. But it's really, in terms of fulfilling the requirements of this, it materially goes with us on that. And that's the 201.023, the eight days on there. Because it is, when it's acted upon by the corporate body, four days of the last week that were occurred earlier.
My only concern on this was, and I kind of agree with the lady earlier, for the citizens to come up with the proper person, because we're putting people in as, we put it as an appointment, and most of the time it kind of doesn't work out. But at the same time, what I'm kind of bothered is, we paid so much money to legal, and according to the legal last week, and don't think that I'm upset about appointing or whatever, what you had said last week was that we could appoint. Okay? And to me, it's like, we go back and forth, and we depend on the legal counsel, and then all of a sudden, it's always depending who you talk to, is what you want here. And to me, we've spent thousands of dollars in legal fees, it's not your fault, or, you know, or part of it is, I guess, because how much money did we spend to figure this out that we were going to be able to appoint and lose office, you know, figuring all that out? And we paid thousands of dollars properly on a bill to get that legal, and then we come back, and we've got a different story. But the thing, my concern is, that we're spending all this money, when I believe that maybe the charter does have to be more amended, and maybe get a committee to look it over, because to appoint is maybe just call an election. To me, I was looking not to spend a $500,000 for an election, but the right thing it is. I mean, I wouldn't agree regardless with an election. But for the legal to come stand there and tell me, you can appoint, then we get in this, appointing, and then tomorrow we get sued because this, and we're depending on the legal. So, what...
I think that's what I said.
No, and the...
And I got the gavel wrapped, I mean, for asking questions.
But I don't think, Mr. Rodriguez, on your case, was, we were sitting to accept the resignation. That, we were going to have to do, because if Mr. Baker didn't get his resignation with the DA, he didn't get his part of his gift. By holding that up, there was going to, I wasn't, we were going to vote, whether we were going to appoint, or we were going to do the election on the following. It was no reason to hold last week to say, let's hold. The thing was, the resignation, we did have to appoint, because he, you know, talked to the DA, but that's what we had to do.
But to give, to put icing on the cake over here, my idea, direct counsel to get more information from the Secretary of State, but who directed him not to get that information from the Secretary of State is an unknown question to me, or the answer is unknown. So, I took it upon myself to get the information, and that's where the pressure...
And I still believe we can appoint, but I believe that we should let the citizens go ahead and have an election, because they could go up and around and around, because I have the legal advice, and I think we can do it. But I do want to give the citizens their opportunity. But the thing is, from us holding up last week wasn't the right thing, because we were just accepting the resignation, that's all we were doing. Today, we're going to do the, whatever the proper thing is, but I'm just tired of, this is not the first time it's happened, you know? We get an opinion, legal opinion, and tomorrow it becomes different. I mean, who's dropping the ball, or maybe we have to change legal, I don't know what we got to do, but we have to, and nothing, you know, to be mean to help, it's just that we're here trying, we get sued tomorrow, and it's all I mean that, we need to give the story right. Thank you.
Mr. Moniz, are you making a motion to call for a special election for council place number one?
I don't know, anybody else have, anybody have any comments? Let it out, and then what do you think of order of priority?
Well, I just wanted to go ahead and put it on the record, that I don't know how information gets out on the streets, that we were seeking to appoint somebody. You hear one story that we were, because we want to get who we want. There had been no discussion among us as to any appointments. You know, you read stuff out of blogs, or you meet people out on the street, and they ask us questions, and I said, man, where do you people get this stuff from? Because we had not discussed any particular person that we wanted to get, whether we had several. Last meeting, as I understand it, we were just there to accept his resignation. You gave us the option, supposedly, you know, either have an election or appoint somebody. But that was just options. It's not saying we were going to go appoint somebody. You could still say we're going to have an election. So, I just want to go on the record to say that we had no discussion as to any individual, you know, being appointed. For myself, or you know, that's what we have. I didn't discuss it with anybody, now.
I didn't discuss it with anybody, they said, they said, oh, part of it's got his friends, this and that, and with me, and we talked about, I've always been, with the people, you know, to turn the people, and the right thing is to go ahead and let the people decide, but the only thing, that we're looking as if it's a money. But the right thing is to call an election, and I make that motion to make the call of election. I don't know what day with the election will be, if we do that one, I don't know.
The second Saturday of May, that's May 10th, 2013.
Okay, that's a motion. I have a motion to call for a special election for council place number one. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Councilman Moniz, second by Councilman Guerrero, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to item two, in executive session, pursuant to section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, Personnel Matters to Deliver the Appointments, Interim Employment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee, City Manager. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I make a motion, we enter into executive session.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a second?
A second.
Motion by Councilman Manieto, second by Councilman O'Leary, the time is 8:50.
While the council goes into executive session, the doors will be closed. Please keep your conversations closed, because the door can't be here to do it.
Aye.